Let's have a seat and assemble. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 17th, 2021 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy to have each of you with us tonight. Ms. LaMagna will now review the proceedings or procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 12 is the public comment form, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please speak, give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordnance reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances thereon by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, or to refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. LaMagna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Strickland.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Trager.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes of the October 20th, 2021 regular city commission meeting.
So move.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those in opposition, same sign. This motion carries seven zero.
Seven zero, yeah.
At this time, we will have our agenda approval. Our city manager will address any changes.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, there are three changes. First one is for changing a verbiage on Agenda Item AI to re-resolution authorizing an amendment to the city manager's employment agreement to include an option to use a city-owned vehicle or receive a monthly car allowance, not authorizing the purchase of a new pickup or SUV in an amount not to exceed the $55,000 based on the city manager's election for use of a city-owned vehicle. Agenda Item 8J, change Mayor Henry's bike week contribution amount to $250, and add Addendum 8K, Florida Department of State African-American Cultural and Historical Grant Application to the consent items. That concludes the changes.
Motion to approve the agenda with changes.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Henry, from Commissioner Reed. We'll take the second from Commissioner May. Reed made the motion.
Henry, wasn't it?
It was. You didn't? It was all three of you. Commissioner Reed, Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Could I get a brief explanation about the grant, please? Just a quick overview of it?
That's great. Great idea.
I didn't hear the question.
The grant, he'd like an explanation about the grant, if you have someone.
Yeah, I'm going to bring Vincent Terry up to present the grant, what we're trying to do with that grant in the Midtown area.
Vincent Terry, City of Daytona Leisure Services Manager. The grant that we're seeking is a grant from the African-American Cultural and Historical Entity, and we are looking to do improvements to the Daisy Stockton Park area. Part of the improvements that we're doing, we're adding a cover to the seating area and other amenities to help activate this facility. Playgrounds, pavilions.
Picnic tables.
Picnic tables.
Is that the only area we're focusing on?
No, no, we're focusing on other areas for parks, but this grant is tied to this particular location because these were part of the whole impact fee discussions that we had previously. But these are not the only grants we're seeking for other parks in the entire Daytona Beach area.
I was actually enjoying Ms. Betty Goodman's Black Historic Trail booklet that she put together a while back. I was looking at that, and I was just wondering, are we doing any improvements to any of those facilities? There was a very nice booklet that they put out. CBB also has it?
Most of those facilities, they're just 13 areas around the town that we've indicated we're going to highlight with the.
With the book?
Mayor Clavathum paint.
Okay.
Yes, the art district.
Right.
We're going to feature those 13 areas. Some of them are like my Bethel Baptist Institutional Church. You know, they're entities that are owned by others in the city, but we're going to feature those, yes.
Work with them to try to help them. Fantastic, all right.
And I actually think, Ann Ruby, did you? I think you did that booklet.
I did the booklet I did.
The brochure, okay.
Yeah, she did the most recent brochure. But Betty did do a book. There is a book.
Yeah, there is.
Do we have any other questions? Well, while we're on that, I'll just mention it during my comments at the end. Thank you, sir.
Well, I'm excited about this. Nothing much other than like maybe painting the stage and the upkeep of the current facilities is what we've done with Daisy, so now we're taking it to another level. And I think the citizens would be pleased with the covering. You know, we've got the great seating for them to see what's going on on the stage, but additional seating, picnic tables, just to make it more of a, you know, familiar-type area to come to. I hope we get the grant.
I do, too. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
So we have, I think it's fantastic. It's Zone 3, Zone 6, so I'm excited about the investment. So does that mean that people will have access to the park? Because there's a gate around it. So does that mean that they'd have access to the park all the time versus the gate that goes around it?
Well, they always, they still have access.
It's not locked.
It's just it's not locked.
People thought it was locked. Oh, it's closed.
Okay.
It is locked.
Oh, it is locked.
I went there this morning to walk at 6:30, and it was locked.
But it's not locked during the day, is it?
Not during the day. We have hours on when our parks are open.
Yeah. So with the improvements, the activation will probably transition from just being a rental-type facility to more where people can go just have, eat food, play at playgrounds, picnic, so we will transition it.
Exactly.
Okay.
But still be able to rent it.
Yeah, still be able to rent it. All right, do we have any other questions or comments here? All right, hearing none. We had a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
We have no presentations tonight. Item number six, so we're going to move on to item number seven. Public comments by people addressing the city commission during this time. Citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. And I have a few speakers. My first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. First thing, welcome, Ken.
Thank you.
Glad to see you here. Two, she normally says which ones. It's D, F, G, and H. D is the wall. You have to look it up in the backup material. It's for the wall that's just been completed or in the process of being completed. The question is, are we going to continue it all the way down to north of Seabreeze? There's a need for it, for consistency, et cetera. So in the future, hopefully that's coming down the pike. Secondly, Collins Park, the playground. I don't recall the public knowing what's going in there. There's been no feedback from them, because I've talked to them. Every Sunday, I stop by, and I talk to the people that are there. There's a need for little children. All of them have people in strollers, one to five years old, that type of thing. So to have anything for the older kids would not be really necessary. So we had something put on Manatee Island, and nobody uses it. It's this kind of like squirrely thing that you kind of climb on. It looks like a big sewage pipe. So I think the public should have a right to know what's going in their park and have a say-so on it. Secondly is, Collins Park is on the river. Did we try for any find funds? The county, it was just earlier yesterday, Echo Funds. Jim never really asked for Echo Funds. We put a ton of money into Echo and Volusia Forever. In the 30 years that I've been here for Florida Forever and Volusia Forever, we've only gotten $800,000 out of Volusia Forever, and we've put in, what, $23 million? So to lose $23 million is a lot of money to lose if we don't ask for it. And Kelly, who used to be the county chair, says Jim never asked. So there's plenty of money in Echo. There was $13 million set aside for us that they were going to give to us, and we didn't want it. So at this point, ask for Echo Funds. They've got plenty left over, and they're asking to get rid of it. The CRA loan, who, which CRA, how much, and what loan? And lastly, I want to thank Stacy again for being proactive on acquiring that property. And I ask all of you to look at property in your neighborhoods, to see what we can do to help the neighborhoods and expand what's in your parks. There may be something in a park in your zone. It would be better if it had parking, or it would be better if it had X, Y, and Z. You alone would know what's happening because you talk to those people. Stacy's helping her neighborhood. You all should help yours as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Jenny Nazak. And Frederick Brown's on A, C, and I, I believe. Okay.
Good evening. Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. Once again, we have an opportunity to have Daytona be the city of the future, and instead, it seems we keep going to the city of carbon fuels. Item 8A, you're spending over half a million dollars on obsolete vehicles. Also, I'm sorry, 8A. 8I, and this should interest our city manager in particular, it would be an excellent opportunity to have a vehicle, electric vehicle, and be able to have a logo on it, Daytona, the city of the future. It's time that the city gets real on this subject. Daytona Shores has for several years now had electric chargers at their city hall facilities. Daytona Beach does not. It's time that we start putting chargers in. It's time that we start supporting the vehicles of the future. You will find, when you, there's numerous studies on this, the cost of maintaining them is considerably less. You don't have oil changes or any of these sort of things affiliated with, or tune-ups or anything that's affiliated with ICE vehicles, which, again, are soon to be obsolete. As you, if you've been reading anything in the news, you realize that most of the major, what they call ICE internal combustion engine manufacturers are planning a switch over electric. Unfortunately, they're not doing it at a fast enough rate. But already in Europe, they've banned them in many countries within the next five to 10 years. This is real. This is meaningful to the city of Daytona. The Ocean rise is real. We should be right on top of this because it's right here in our backyard. I've never seen so much flooding along the river as I've seen recently in times when we didn't have major storms, and this is all indication. I remember back in the early '60s how much beach there was out there. Half of it's gone. We need to get real. We need to get real, real fast. We need to look at putting solar on our water treatment facilities. Excellent location, lots of sunshine, and this will be a perfect opportunity to get long-term investments. Again, I would be, if I was in the city's position, seeking federal funds, which there is a great trend to doing that right now. So I think we should have an active committee pursuing this for real, and we need to do it, as I said, really quickly. The other issue I wanted to talk about, again, I've talked a couple of times about this, the safety. I'm glad to see the safety walk-to-school program you have, but I would still like to incorporate a standard for crosswalks that would include in-roadway light warning systems. And again, I have offered numerous times to be on a committee to help with the decision-making. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak.
Good evening, everybody. Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey Avenue, 8C, Safe Roots School. Fabulous idea, and I hope it gets replicated all over the place. Thank you.
And our final speaker on the consent agenda is Doyle Lewis.
My name is Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach, United States. Good evening. Congratulations, Ken.
Thank you.
You worked hard for years. I'm going to talk about the parks, 8D and 8F. They've been needing upgrading and stuff for years, so I agree with both of them. And go after the Echo Funds stuff, or the Seawalls and all, whatever. But I want to add that the pavilions at City Island have been locked up and chained down for years. So we need to look at those because people are around there walking, they're bringing their children around there, and everybody's asking why they're locked up. I've been there, back and forth around, doing my studying, doing my college books, and everybody wants to know why we have those pavilions unusable. It's been an eyesore, and it's time to open them back up. So let's take a look at those parks also, because I've had hundreds of people ask me and tell me they need to be open. Thank you, Doyle Lewis.
That was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
All right, we're going to take a motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Trager. Do we have any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, First Amendment to Project Sigma, PD. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Project Sigma Plan District Agreement, which regulates the development and use of 118-plus acre site generally located on the west side of North Clyde Morris Boulevard and northwest quadrant of LPJ Boulevard and Clyde Morris Boulevard intersection, to apply single-family development landscaping requirements to certain types of multifamily uses that may be built on the site, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments?
I do have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
All right, no questions from Mr. Merrill. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item 9B, it's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, First Amendment to Project Theta, PD. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Project Theta Plan District Agreement, which regulates development and use of a 37.1-plus acre site generally located in the southeast quadrant of Williamson Boulevard and Strickland Range Road, Strickland Range intersection, to apply single-family development landscaping requirements to certain types of multifamily uses that may be built on the site, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Reed. All right, do we have any questions of this matter?
Could you explain, please, the landscaping? Is there a difference in landscaping or required landscaping from single to multi? And the purpose of it?
Thank you, Dennis Murzak, Planning Director. Basically, what you're going to find is a multifamily development. When we have a multifamily development, the buildings tend to be larger. You have a 16-unit, 18-unit building, and with that, we expect greater landscaping around those buildings. So we want perimeter landscaping around the entire building, and then we want a tree at every corner of that building. The change would allow, a change to the landscaping more for a single-family type of a use, even though it's still a multifamily. If you've been up to the new development that they're building, the cottages, where you see the single units and kind of the duplex units, for them to have landscaping around all of those buildings and a tree at every corner of that building, it just wouldn't be appropriate for the scale of that site. So the change here would be similar to what they've done over at the cottages so that they can have a landscaping that would be equal to what you might see in a single-family development, because that's the type of development that this would look like, even though it's multifamily.
What is the purpose of the landscaping? What is it designed to do? Is it designed to just beautify the area, designed to hide the area? What is it designed to do?
Well, aesthetics and shade, and allows, you know, the places for the birds to go to.
Okay.
It's always positive for landscaping.
And for the record, Rob Merrill here was here to, on behalf of the applicant, for any additional questions.
All right, do we have any additional questions? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, moving on to item 9C. It is Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Third Amendment to the First United Methodist Church Plan Development Agreement and Hallmark Heritage Plan Development. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance relating to approximately 42.2 acres of property located on the west side of Williamson Boulevard, approximately 1,000 feet north of Strickland Range Road, and 750 feet south of Memorial Medical Parkway, rezoning the property from PDG Plan Development General to PDG Plan Development General Zoning District, approving the Third Amendment to the First United Methodist Church Plan Development Agreement to remove the property from the scope of that agreement, approving the Hallmark Heritage Plan District Agreement, authorizing development of the property with residential, commercial, communication, and medical uses, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the amendment and the agreement, and on behalf of the applicant is requesting that this item be continued to the December 15th, 2021 city commission meeting. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from, was it Commissioner Reed? Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, we have no further questions or comments. Did you make a motion, ma'am?
No, sir.
Who made, you made the motion, and you second?
Yes, sir.
And you also, the one that I recognize is the one that I heard first. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Now move on to item 9D, which is Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Accessory Dwelling Units Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the land development code in relation to accessory dwelling units, amending Article 4, Section 4.9(c) .4, Article 5, Section 5.3, Article 6, Section Table 6.2(c) .i, C .1, and Article 11, Section 11.5, to add ADUs as a permitted accessory use for single-family lots in multiple zoning districts, establishing use-related standards and defined terms, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Henry. Do we have any questions?
Should I get it onto the record? So this past week, we all received public record. We received multiple emails from residents, both for and against ADUs, which I completely appreciated, both the for position and the against position. I appreciated hearing both sides of the situation. So I can only speak for the residents in Zone 3 who contacted me and the ones who met with me. So that is the voice that I'm using right now. They have a couple of questions, and so I'm not sure who would address them with regard to ADUs. Who would that be? Thank you, sir. So as it relates, and this is directly from a resident, so as it relates to the landscaping requirement, will there be a landscaping requirement for the ADU in the backyard should we pass this ordinance? Have we considered that at all?
Landscape requirements would still have to meet the requirements that you would have for a single-family lot. So whatever the single-family lot requirements are, we'd still have to meet those requirements.
Okay. Next question. So right now, we have some areas that are exempt from ADUs. Could you please tell me what those areas are?
The TD overlay district, when you say exempt, it's an overlay district that currently permits it. So we can have ADUs within a TD overlay district. There's also some planned development districts that also allow AD.
Okay, so that for those at home, right? So we have, so I'm clear, I'm going to just speak, someone said, "Put it where the goats can eat it." So here we go. HOAs, so we're clear, are exempt. They will not be using ADUs because it's part of their bylaws. Then we also have, yeah, no, these are the existing ones, the existing HOAs, correct? Okay.
Existing PDs, well, I can explain. I'm sorry. A PD, unless the PD currently allows an ADU in the PD agreement, a PD, a current PD will not be permitted.
And that's exactly what I'm saying.
They'll have to amend their PD to be able to allow.
100%. I completely agree with that. Totally understand, and have for months now. All right, so number one. Number two, as we move forward, as we have new developments come in, could they, in their bylaws, agree to have ADUs as they move forward into their future, a new development?
They can put it in their bylaws, but they still have to amend their PD agreement and go through the process, through the planning board, and the city commission to grant approval to allow that use.
So these would be brand-new developments, let's say on the west side what they're doing, so they could have ADUs as part of their development, correct?
If their PD allows it, yes, they can.
Okay. And so just so we're clear, because at one point, we're talking about the cost of building an ADU, and we said in the Midtown area, it'd be $160,000 roughly, $200 a square foot. That's the number we tossed out publicly?
There was a number that was associated with that. I don't have the actual cost of.
I think in the notes.
And plus, you know, with the way the costs are going up.
Sure, it's more, it'll be more than a $160. But let's say at the time, it was $160. I can go with that. So for someone in Midtown to build an ADU or to make an adjustment to their current land, it would cost them $160,000 at the time, and that was a few months ago, correct? And right now, the cost would actually be higher. Is that right?
It's potential, yes. You know, there are other opportunities to build ADUs within a building, so a building can be built out internally with an ADU in it, which may end up saving money. I don't know if that cost was for a separate ADU building on the property, or if they was talking about maybe retrofit.
It's a number that we threw out based on our calculations.
And I think that came from another community talking about what the cost of the.
Which we put in our notes, so it's our backup data, right? So given that, I will tell you that as of last week, a home sold, a house in the Midtown area, one house, I think it was a 3-2, was $150,000. So a house, which still needs renovation, is $150,000, but we're saying that to have an ADU is about $160,000. So the numbers don't work for me in that particular, and I'm just saying this so it's on the record, so people clearly understand what this means in the community.
And again, I would consult a professional on what that actual cost might be to.
Not a problem. I guess we'll move on a little bit. Let's talk about the overlay areas and historic areas. So on the beach side, we have Seabreeze neighborhood, right? Ocean Dunes neighborhood. Can they have ADUs?
Currently?
Yeah.
If they're in a TD overlay district, they could.
Okay. So right now, they have an overlay that says they can have garage apartments. That's what we're saying, right?
That would be considered an ADU, yes.
Okay. But it's part of something they agree to? But it's part of something they agree to?
Yes.
To keep them historic?
Either they agreed to it or they, when it went through the City Commission for approval, you know, it was approved by the City Commission.
So given that they have an overlay, could that particular area add additional ADUs? Or are they somehow protected from it?
Additional, you mean more than one ADU on a single property?
Yeah. Could they add any?
The code would only allow one ADU per property.
So in my mind's eye, I'm envisioning a home that already has a garage conversion unit, which is allowed because it's part of their overlay agreement, being part of the National Historic Registry. That was part of the agreement they had. Could that particular property add something? It's not in the front. Could they add something in the back?
The land development code would only permit one ADU per single-family.
So let's say there's a lot there right now. But remember, they're part of the overlay. Could they then have an ADU? Because I thought that because of the overlay, they couldn't add it. It was just for those few homes that were historic.
No, the current LDC allows the overlay district to have an ADU. Excuse me. But it still would be restricted to just that one ADU. You couldn't have more than a one ADU.
Okay, so they could, in fact, even though they're historic, they could, in fact, add more ADUs right now, if we did this.
It's possible, provided that they met all of the other requirements of the land development code. You know, and there's a misnomer sometimes. That's just because something is permitted, it can go on the property. You still have to meet all of the requirements. You still have to meet the parking requirements. You still have to meet the setback requirements. You have to meet the design requirements. Just because a property is permitted to have a use doesn't necessarily mean that property is appropriate for that use. You have to go through those standards and see if it would work.
And then also, I just, and again, I want to be sure people truly understand and that I'm not giving out misinformation, okay? So these do not have to be HUD compliant, correct?
HUD compliant?
Yeah, so let's say I have a housing voucher. They don't actually have to be compliant for that. There's no rule about that, correct?
We don't address HUD compliance. That's something that landlords and tenants have to deal with. This doesn't address HUD compliance whatsoever.
Okay. But we have no standards. We have building code standards, but that's it. Just city building code standards, and that's all we have, correct?
They also have to pass a rental license inspection to fix the issues.
Okay. And I'm asking these questions because they came up for people who are both pro and con. And so I'm actually asking this for clarification. There are some people who might want it, and so this is a little bit more clarification for them, okay? And so I guess I just want to be on the record, asking this question. Well, two things. Are we adding extra code officers at all for this, to help out? Because we'll be expanding a market that we have. Are we adding any extra officers to manage anything? Any extra rental permit people? Any extra inspection people or anything to do with planning or building? Are we adding anything extra? Okay. And then finally, the big questions. There were two big questions that came from multiple conversations, and they were, what does the city stand to gain from this move? Because it would be, it's not for you, it's just a statement. What does the city stand to gain from doing this in an entire city versus what does the city stand to lose from it? And also, why are we not doing it as a zone-by-zone little referendum? Have them take a vote in their zones to say this is what they want or what they don't want, as opposed to making it citywide? So these are the conversations I had, and these are some of the questions and concerns raised by residents of Zone 3. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I have.
We have a litany of speakers.
Yes.
So we will hear the speaker.
Okay. My first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Mary Sink.
Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I like and dislike this thing, all right? I like it because, one, if it were done correctly, it allows for a lot of people to be able to have a place to live that they can afford. If it's not done correctly, we do have a problem, especially like in my neighborhood, short-term rentals. This is big for those who want short-term rentals. It's a bonus for them. Secondly, midtown and beachside really can't take advantage of this, all right? Our houses were built, and there's only so much space for parking. I have a wall, so if I wanted this, I would have to tear down the wall and put parking all across the front of my house. They did this in Hialeah, which is in Miami. You drive down those streets, and what used to be lawns, it'd be a sidewalk and a pavement for parking a car. Well, because the number of cars, you have 50 feet of asphalt or cement, because they need that for parking. So you get no landscaping. So when you look at the CRAs, most of the properties in my CRAs are 50-foot wide. Our street is 75. But because of the walls, we can't have accessory dwelling units. Although we have them, we can't use them. I was told, no, you can't use your, I mean, for 100 years, there was a parking garage in the back with a two-bedroom apartment on the top. But I can't use it, all right? Because I don't have the parking space for it. Even though there are 27 parking spaces on the street, we can't count those. So to me, if you're in an area that has street parking, that should be able to be counted. Apparently, in your code, it's not. So to me, there are several things that kind of balance each other out. So I'm asking you to look at these carefully. The price tag, there was an article in the Florida Times, or Daytona Times, that Charles' son is saying that his mother's old place can't be used. It's like $150,000 to renovate it. Well, a lot of people in midtown don't have that kind of funding. So their units, we've got to be able, if they're going to, if, when you're poor, you don't have that access. You can't get a loan. You really can't. You may say, "Well, I can get a loan, and then I can rent this." They're not going to trust you. You have to have the money before you get the money. So it's really not going to help midtown squat, all right? Unless we're, you give everybody $150,000 to put an ADU in? I don't think so. So it's not going to help them, it's not going to help us. So who's it going to help? So you've got to look at this carefully. It sounds good. I'd like to be able for cheap housing, but I just don't see how it's fitting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Sink, and on deck is Jenny Nazak.
I'm Mary Sink, 1225 Gamble Place in Daytona Beach. The accessory dwelling unit proposal on tonight's agenda, I think, is one step forward in addressing the housing shortage in our city. At the same time, it is also an incentive for homeowners to improve their properties and also an opportunity to generate income. So from my point of view, this is a win-win for both the renters and the property owners. As we have seen, not only with this proposal, but with other forward-thinking civic initiatives, voices protecting the status quo can be very, very loud. But that doesn't mean that they represent the majority, and it doesn't mean that they represent what's in the best interest of the community. It's all too easy to become entrenched in the status quo. But honestly, the status quo is no longer working. The status quo is not what we want for Daytona Beach. What we want is something better than the status quo. City staff has done an absolutely fabulous job on this proposal. They incorporated best practices from other cities to maximize the benefits of ADU rentals. They also have specified parking, square footage, and other standards to ensure that ADU rentals do not compromise the residential nature of our neighborhoods. The planning board approved their work. Now it's up to you, the commission, to bring all this hard work over the finish line. I ask you to vote in favor of this change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak, and on deck is Jared Hoffpower.
Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey. Sometimes I tell people that where I live is smack dab in the smack dab. And that means, like, right, it's just south of Main Street, right by the ocean. In our little neighborhood, a lot of the houses are old, and they already have little mini cottages in the back, or some of them have garages or garage apartments. And as I understand it, right now, the people are restricted from actually renting them out. Like, their mother could live there or someplace, but they're not allowed to rent it out. So there's some of these little cottages that go to waste, and it could really add some housing to our neighborhood. And as I've expressed many times, there is a serious, there's a housing problem in our neighborhood for the working population and retiree population. So ADUs are great. They're instant, like, naturally, they can be naturally affordable housing. They can be naturally eco-friendly. We can be adding residents to make the neighborhood denser and more attractive for businesses. I do agree with John Nicholson that we might want to look at the, making the parking requirement flexible. Like, on my street, for example, it's street parking. And maybe if it's street parking, maybe there doesn't need to be extra parking. And also possibly look into, if the homeowner doesn't have a car. Like me, I actually do not own a car, and I actually seek out housemates who also do not have cars. And maybe there could be some flexibility there. And actually, the more dense our neighborhoods get, the more walkable they will be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jared Hoffpower, and on deck is Lisa Ledgerwood.
Hello, Jared Hoffpower, 508 Rybalt. A lot of my questions have actually been answered, or at least asked, and maybe not answered. But in some of the asking of those, it's about code enforcement officers being added, and that seemed like a no. I know there was some head nodding, but there's no current officers being added to that. Currently, it seems like they can't keep up anyway. So why are we adding so much more without a budget and a plan to take some of that work off of those code enforcement officers who are already working really hard? We talked a little bit about landscaping for multifamily. Being that ADUs are going to be added, you're making every single-family home into a possible multifamily home. Why would we not hold them to the same standard as multifamily homes? Business licenses for rentals? And again, there's no more staff to do that, are the people that are doing those business licenses, following up with rental inspections. Maybe they have nothing to do, and they need the work, but that's not what I understand. You can't put forward a plan with only half of the solutions. And that's, it seems like that's inadequate. Illegal activity in an ADU? Since it's, if they're going to qualify that as a single-family home with an ADU, who's responsible for that? Is it the homeowner? Because he is responsible, whoever that homeowner may be, for what goes on on their property? Is that going to be something that's addressed in this proposal? And then just kind of as a final thought, generally, in all the places I've lived in my life, and I'm new here to Daytona Beach, it's amazing, we love it, by the way. Whenever something is brought up where historic homes are divided, cut up, made into multifamily units, you're trying to cram more people into a small area. If it's not really well-thought-out and really well-done and planned with the proper oversight and budgeting, that's generally considered a failure. And I see it all over the place. And it's generally failures because those steps are not taken. I'd like to not see that happen here. I'd like to see a more nuanced solution to this. At the current time, I would absolutely be against adding ADUs in the way that they're being added. But I would absolutely be for a more nuanced solution. That would really be a win for the city.
Our next speaker is Lisa Ledgerwood, and on deck is Emily Nice.
All right, hi, I'm Lisa Ledgerwood. I live at 118 Fraser Road, Daytona Beach. And I am a helper. If anybody needs help, I am the first person they call. And a bunch of my friends lately have just been asking, like, hey, do you know of any rentals? Do you know of any apartments? My friend Melissa is renting an apartment in Daytona Beach, and she is paying $1,800 a month. She is just one person. It's just a little apartment. And my boyfriend, he's a single dad, and he, you know, makes like $35,000 a year, and he just can't afford $1,800 a month for a place for him and his daughter to live. And if they could just find like a mother-in-law suite and rent that out for even $1,000, whatever, you know, then it would just create affordable housing for so many people. I know there's so many single moms and single dads out there. If they could just have a little mother-in-law suite, it would just solve so many problems. Just rent's expensive, and it would benefit the homeowners, and it would just benefit the, you know, the lower income or even just, I don't even consider them lower income, but my boyfriend, but average income, just rent is extremely high. So when you guys are making your decision, I just want you to consider that there is like kind of a housing crisis in this area, and it would solve. And I think there's codes already in place for a lot of the concerns. Like, you know, there's already landscaping codes and parking codes, different ordinances. So just, I guess, consider saying, you know, yes, in changing the laws and allowing that. I also, no, there's already rental regulations put into place. And I know, like, code's pretty backed up doing the rental inspections. But I don't think that you should, like, limit ADUs, like, not have ADUs just because you're backed up. Because one day, some, you know, 10 people could have a new rental. So I just think it's not really like worrying about, worrying about, like, shortage in, like, code enforcement officers isn't really, I wouldn't consider that in your, I guess, thought process when you're going to vote. So anyways, that's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Nice, and on deck is Sandy Murphy.
Hi, everyone. I know you're a commission that considers everything fairly and completely. And on this ADU issue, I would just like to present a couple of concerns that I have. By the way, Emily Nice, 941 North Oleander. My family has owned rental property for over 50 years. I've seen a lot in Daytona Beach. And I have also had a property that was across the street from a slumlord for many decades. I have personally had so many challenges because when you have that in your neighborhood, that whole section of your neighborhood is affected. And that's why I'm here tonight, because dealing with people who don't take care of their properties and also not having city staff to come out on a timely basis to help with this, for instance, if they are short-staffed, as many police departments across the nation are right now. This could be a real problem. ADUs increase density, without a doubt. And in so doing, whenever you have an increase in density, you must have an increase in your public safety staff. So ADUs may be a solution for the future, but until we look completely at the resources that we have today and soon, we are not really equipped to make this decision because we can't just expect our police department and our code staff to be able to handle more than they're already handling. This is something that needs to have the proper time to look at what we have. Also, it is a risk to them if you expect them to handle more than what they're equipped to do. It's a risk to them, but what about our perceived safety within our community as residents? That's what makes our city. We have so much going for us, but how safe we feel probably is number one for all of us with whatever we do in the city, wherever we go. Also, for instance, the driveways. I'm the co-chair of the Seabreeze Neighborhood Watch. In our section of the beach side, about 83% of the driveways are single-lane. That means that the second car is going to be parking on the grass because it's very unrealistic to think that drivers will be going in and out of a single-car driveway without parking on the lawn or without crowding the streets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandy Murphy, and on deck is Ann Ruby.
36 Park Avenue. And I apologize in advance, I'm going to be very disjointed tonight because I had no intention of coming up and speaking. But so many things are said that bother me that I feel like I need to re- I feel like I need to respond to some of them. Number one, the idea that nobody in midtown could do this ignores the fact that there are many, many homeowners there who have had their properties for a long time, who have substantial equity, who could turn that into funding for either an ADU separately on the property or change. So let's not count them out. Secondly, HUD compliance, absolutely not material. We had a whole discussion about that before, when we talked about income discrimination. Not every unit has to be HUD compliant. We have codes. These units will have to comply with those codes. People are speaking as if these will emerge full-fledged a thousand at a time. You know, it is not going to happen like that, just in terms of financing. People cannot make things move that fast. And so you'll see one here, one there, one there, one there. I think we can keep up with that. That's a different kind of picture than what's being painted here. Short-term rentals, an entirely different subject. These will not be short-term rentals, and nothing that has to do with them are relevant here. John says, "Beachside can't take advantage of this, because the spaces are too small." I live in a neighborhood on the beachside where we could absolutely take advantage of that. So again, neighborhood by neighborhood, things may be appropriate or inappropriate. Why can't we do a referendum? That is why we have commissioners, so that they can represent the interests of their zone. If we have to take everything to a vote of the populace when we change the land development code, we will never get anywhere in this community. I spent time today talking with a business owner from Main Street, and one of her very big concerns was that they can't get the development they need without more rooftops. Density can be a very good thing. It's more eyes on the street. It can actually add to public safety. It gets more people out and about. It builds business. People, we've talked about this in several venues, where the rooftops will lead to more development in our more stagnant areas of town. So it's something that I think of as desirable, you know? Why do we not have to hold them to the same standards as other multi-units? For the same reason that people came in here tonight and say, can we be exempted from those? Because sometimes those standards don't make sense on smaller lots for smaller property. Just some thoughts, thank you.
Our next speaker is Ann Ruby, and on deck is Joyce Case.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. A city is an area in which a large number of people live fairly close together. When you choose to live in a city, you're choosing to live in close proximity to others. A neighborhood is a geographically localized community within a larger city. Neighborhoods are often social communities with considerable face-to-face interaction among each other. A neighbor is a person living near another person. Neighbors come in all forms, some you agree with, some you don't. A straw man is a form of an argument, an informal fallacy of having the impression of refuting an argument, whereas the real subject of the argument was not addressed or refuted, but instead replaced with one, a false one. For example, the arguments used by some residents asserting that supporters of ADUs are supporters of short-term rentals. Fear-mongering is a form of manipulation, which causes fear by exaggerated rumors of impending danger. For example, the assertion made in the June News Journal that, quote, "Existing property lines, zoning rules, and building codes would change. The long-term ripple effect is almost unimaginable from this action. New and unmanaged population growth would break down even further our already overused roads, infrastructure facilities, and will certainly lead to higher taxes that offset the heavier use," end quote. An anecdote is a story with a point, to communicate an abstract idea about an issue through the concrete details of a short narrative. Anecdotal evidence is a factual claim relying on anecdotes, on personal observation collected in a casual or non-systematic manner. Anecdotal evidence should only be used as the basis for permissive policies. Anecdotal evidence is not sufficient justification for restrictive policies. If a policy is going to restrict people, its merits should be demonstrably, should be demonstrable across all appropriately, an appropriately large sample of the affected population. In other words, restricting the use of ADUs in a city is a policy decision that should not be based on the anecdotal evidence of the straw man arguments and the fear-mongering of neighbors who have chosen to live within city limits. The issues we have around illegal parking are real. The issues we have around illegally subdivided rental units are real. Code enforcement is already addressing these issues. We cannot know right now what additional burden might be placed on code enforcement. That's a fact that will only be available after, over time. Staffing levels can be adjusted based on that fact. Far more pressing is the enforcement issues around the need for more housing units affordable on the wages earned here. The dearth of workforce housing will not be solved by any single action available to the city. The city needs to take many small baby steps. The city needs to activate as many options as possible to house its residents. Together, as neighbors in a city, it's the need to do what's right for others, not just ourselves. In that case, it's ADUs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joyce Case, and on deck is Denise, and I'm sorry, I can't read what the last name is. Stone. Okay.
Hey, Marjorie, how you doing? Good. Good evening, everybody. My name's Joyce Case. I work at the Health Planning Council, and I'm here to actually ask you not to support ADUs. I don't think it's a good move for our city. But I'd really like, it doesn't really increase affordable housing, and I think that's the fallacy in of it all. You know, is that it's going to somehow create this volume of housing that we have available here. I would like for you all to consider approaching maybe the Continuum of Care, who actually does the housing mechanism in our community, looks at affordable housing, and they bring many community partners together to talk about housing. And ask them, is this something that we need to do? Would this benefit our community? I think that's an important step to make, is to approach the COC. Another thing that you could possibly do is see if this is an item on the comprehensive needs assessment that's been done in our community for the health department, and look at those as items for addressing this issue. And then one other thing that, because I work at the Health Planning Council, and we're in the business of doing health impact assessments, I would like for you to look at that and use data to make your decision. Use the data that's available to you on a health impact assessment. How's this going to affect that community that you're putting? How is it going to affect the traffic trends, the people in that community? How is it going to affect all of those issues? So I ask for you to just at least, I'm asking you to vote no, but if you're going to vote no, do it based on information that you have more than what you have from the AARP article. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is Denise Stone.
My name's Denise Stone. I live at 330 Hartford Avenue, Zone 2. Glad to hear. Speaking at the last minute, I would like you all to vote for ADUs. As a homeowner in my neighborhood, I have worked very hard to improve a 1932 cottage that was, for lack of a better word, it was a crap hole. I have fixed it up, repaired it. I have provided separate entrances. I have provided my neighbor's home, and I partnered in with my neighbor's house to fix that crap hole up, to add a mother-in-law suite. I lived in a neighborhood, excuse me, I live in a neighborhood that really was very run-down. And many of us are trying to work on our neighbors and our neighborhood, and we are not providing extra traffic and extra vehicles. We want to be responsible homeowners and tell them, what's one car? We have parking provided. I am very annoyed when I see a person on my street parking on the grass in the front yard. Park in your driveway. What's wrong with that? I feel that, I live in my home, I want to provide a home for somebody else. I provide a very low-cost home. I just recently got in trouble for having a roommate. I couldn't believe it. I had to go get a rental license, I got a roommate, and I'm in trouble again, because I have a roommate. This is getting ridiculous. She's a student, she lives here, but because they somehow thought she was transient, I got in trouble. Now I have to go to the magistrate. It is silly that I have to fight this hard to have a roommate. Just a single young girl in my home. I am retired, semi-retired. I live on Social Security. Why can't I pay my taxes at $400 a month to Volusia, my $100 a month for my water in my city, my electric, and everything else that I have to pay? It is very expensive to live in Daytona Beach side. I love it over here, and I am in tears right now that I have to face possibly selling my house, because I can't have a roommate. But I can provide a driveway. I can provide accommodations at a low expense for students and/or a nurse, or whoever. I'm also very surprised that if somebody comes and lives in Daytona Beach for six months and go back to their home in Daytona, in Canada, that they can't live in my home. What is wrong with that, too, that you can't be here for six months at a time, and it is illegal? Very frustrating when we're trying to provide adequate housing for somebody. Do they have to live in a hotel? Why can't they live with me? I could do my house. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is Doyle Lewis.
Final word, Doyle Lewis.
Good evening, again. My name is Doyle Lewis. I'm going to take a strong stance as a designer, a home builder, and a master at carpentry. I've studied older homes that need too much work, because they were built over 50, 60 years ago. They don't have room for the washer and dryer. They squeeze them into the back, and they make a room. I have watched, I have worked on buildings for 42 years, where they built the house before they had automobiles. That was 70 years ago. Most people didn't have the ability to have an automobile. So you need to look at the age of the building, you need to look at the swinging arms of who was taking care of that building. Every single building will have to be looked at singly. That's going to be a very difficult situation, because the roads that were put in 50, 60 years ago were for people who could afford automobiles to go through these neighborhoods. The houses were not built to have a parking garage. They were not built to park a car, because most people didn't have them. If you study history of the building industry like I have for 42 years, you would understand this. So to actually allow this to happen, one house has to come down, and another house has to come up. It's the only way. So when you write this, it's going to take years. You have to understand, I've got 42 years of this. If it's a 70-year-old house, there is no way anybody can buy that house and make it There's not enough room. I've walked every sidewalk. People are wondering what I'm looking at. I'm looking at their house. They add rooms in the house. I'm not against somebody to have a roommate. That should be allowed, because you have buses, you have bus stops. But every single house needs to be looked at singly. Like I said, there's not enough room for the parking, the motorcycles, the bicycles, the electric bicycles that are coming, and the little scooters for all the little grandkids, because I'm already running into that. So you have to really understand, for one house to come up and have the room, another house has to come down. If you don't believe me, ask me again. Repeat it. My name is Doyle Lewis. I don't have a house, so you can't irritate me. I live in the United States, and I can walk down anywhere.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That was my final speaker.
All right, we have heard from a number of speakers, and we'll commence with the commission comments at this time. Do we have any thoughts or ideas? No questions, no comments? We already have had, heard from Commissioner Cantu, we have a motion, and we have a second. Okay. All right, we'll entertain a vote. There's no comment. You have a comment? None? Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-2, with Commissioner May and Strickland voting no, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. I mean, a motion carries, I'm sorry, 5-2.
The second public hearing for this item will be December 1st, 2021. Moving on to Item 9E, it's Public Works Technical Services Preliminary and Final Platte and Contract for Platte Recording for Latitude Phase 7. This is a resolution quasi-judicial hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary and final platte for Latitude Phase 7 Project, a single-family subdivision of approximately 286 acres of land located north of LPGA Boulevard and west of Timber Creek Road, authorizing the city manager to sign the final platte and to permit recordation there upon meeting certain conditions precedent, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the contract for platte recording and providing an effective date.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Henry, and a second from Commissioner Cantu.
And I have no speakers for this item.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
And moving on to Item 9F, which is our final item on the agenda. The Development Administrative Services Grand Preserve Retail Proportionate Fair Share Agreement. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving the Grand Preserve Retail Proportionate Fair Share Agreement between the city, Sun Glow Construction, Inc., and the county of Volusia, providing for the developer to pay a proportionate fair share contribution to Volusia County in relation to the commercial development of approximately 3.2 acres of land at the northeast corner of LPGA Boulevard and Grand Preserve Way, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Trager, and a second from Commissioner Henry. Who was it? Commissioner Reed, apologies.
Okay. And I do have Joey Posey here, the attorney for the applicant, for any questions.
Right. No questions, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0. That concludes our agenda. At this time, we will hear from members of the commission, followed by members of the community. I think we start tonight with Mr. Strickland.
Well, you just keep putting the pressure on me.
Just wait till we...
I don't have any comments tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, good evening, everybody. So it's hard to believe that the flooding only took place a week ago. It seems to me like a long time, just time seems to be moving super quick for me. So a couple of issues, I just want to address them publicly. I appreciate Public Works and Ms. Shannon Panett's for working so diligently. I had residents call me from Beach Street, from Seagrave, from Fairview, from Bellevue, from Palmetto, from Halifax, from the fishing hole area on Main Street. So I've got people who live in those areas, and we call each other, and I say, look out your window, tell me what you see, because I'm not going to get out in the storm. And they respond back to me with, Commissioner May, our streets are flooding, and people are driving through the road, creating water pressure, and it's coming into our homes. Surprisingly, Halifax did okay. I thought Beachside, they were my concern, I thought, I thought something bad would happen there. But we actually had Public Works out there cleaning out the drains. So I'm glad we have our adopted drain program that we put together, and that we're actually diligently working in that. MMB, I called people down there, it didn't do too badly, I was really happy. Kenfolk area, you know, a little bit off, little bit of flooding there, but definitely Seagrave and Fairview, a commercial lot out there. Seagrave and Fairview, a commercial lot out there, water was going crazy. Especially of concern were the two end spots that I have, anchoring Main Street and Beach Street, and then anchoring Palmetto and Bellevue. Terrible, terrible flooding for at least a block or two that did not subside for one, two, or three days. I called the owner of the fishing hole. You know when somebody is just shell-shocked and they can barely find words to describe what they have to do again? All I could do was be compassionate with him, but it broke my heart because he goes through this every single time, which means that Blue Road, as well as Beach Street, which you've discussed, was going through the same thing, as well as Beverly Court on the other side. It was a terrible thing. So to those residents in Zone Three, thank you so much for being my eyes and ears and contacting me because Public Works, they got on it and then you called and told me that, so thank you so much. I would like to say that I know we can do something with this. I look at international cities that have waterways, I look at Holland, I look at Venice, right? I mean, they have canals. I look at Miami, they're doing some things and I know that our city manager will find a way to work through this. The Midtown area, I've parted that area as well. Whenever it rains, they suffer. And they suffer not just with the rain, but they suffer with the mold that follows the rain for days to come, which impacts their general health and well-being. Just a thought. Moving on from that, we had a small footprint home. Thank you, Commissioner Reed, for coming by. Appreciated that as well. Thank you. It seems again like it was so long ago, but it really wasn't. It was in-between, right? Was it in-between? The last two meetings we had, it was in-between. Thank you to Reverend Rugala, Dr. Reverend Rugala, and the staff at Allen Chapel for accommodating that, I appreciate that. And now people can see options. It's not about saying, "This is what we want." It's about exploring options together. My option will always be a stand for homeownership because that is what I believe in. So moving forward from that, I will say that I did go to a Campbell event and Commissioner Cantu and I were there. I appreciated the fact that we were able to say hello to the students. We had many, many 4.0 students. What may be the most sad was that for the number, maybe you can agree with this, was that the number of students that were present, there were also a number of students who were absent. And I'd heard about this before and part of the reason was they had no transportation. Their parents had no way of getting to the school. The kids had no way of coming to and from the school to be present for their own event where they were being honored. There are many students there from Zone Three and Zone Six and Zone Four. It was fantastic to see them, very proud moment.
What school was that?
Campbell. Campbell, yeah, they had their honor roll evening. It was a nice evening, pleasant evening. Finally, the, I visited the Beaches venue that's going on in the corner of ISB and Peninsula. It's moving along very nicely and I think the residents in that particular community on Beachside and those from throughout the city will appreciate the venue. It is going to be a spectacular meeting place and someplace that locals can go, as well as visitors can go, as well as business people. It's going to be a very nice multi-use space, so I'm looking forward to seeing that. And so occasionally I will go and actually visit various projects in Zone Three. Next time we meet, I will be speaking on, most likely, the Riverfront Park and giving you a quick update on that. Finally, I'd like to bring up two topics. First one. We had an event this weekend and I have to bring it to mind because we haven't mentioned it as yet, right? I live here and you live here. I respect where I live and I hope that all people who come and work, play, use our resources, I hope that they respect where we live and where I live especially. You know, we have, we work really hard for what we have and I don't have that much, but I don't want to leave the city, go somewhere else, and have an image presented of me that I did not create myself. So we had an event this weekend where an individual acted in a particular manner, which then reflected on all of us. And I'm hoping that at some level we can do, and I know we are, do some sort of damage control. I've reached out to some organizations and I've said, "You know, what happened here?" They explained the situation to me and then I receive emails from people telling me how horrified they are. But I know that that does not reflect us and I just wanted to share that with you. But I could not continue this evening and not say something, I'm sure you're gonna bring it up at some point. So there's that. And finally, I wanted to attend a redevelopment board meeting on Beachside and I discovered that sometimes they're canceled. So is there any way that they can still meet the different boards, even though they may not have something before them? Can they still meet and have conversation and discussions that I can kind of hear on Beachside what's going on or what they need or what they want, since they have so many residents who are representative? And is that something we can entertain or discuss or Mr.? Mr. Derrick?
Are you talking about the city's official boards?
Yeah, some of our redevelopment boards, let's say Beachside.
They have to have a quorum to...
So are we saying that when their meetings are canceled, it's because...
Have business.
That's my point, but could they still meet? Is that a possibility? Because they're like us in terms of sunshine.
If they have a quorum and they want to meet as a board.
Is that the position we take now or is that something different? Because I actually, they actually thought, some of the boards, not just one, actually believed that they could not meet because they didn't have something germane on the agenda. Can they just meet?
But what are they gonna discuss?
As far as I can see, just like us, we represent different parts, different areas, and we only speak here. This is the only time we get to speak. We did, I'm just bringing it up again. Thank you.
We addressed this before and I said, "If folks want to meet," I think we kind of agreed that they should be allowed to have a meeting. But the point being made that the manager is making, and this was Mr. Chisholm's position, I think, was that if they didn't have official business, but the idea of a redevelopment board is more than making decisions, it's also planning and talking about issues that they hope for. I have hoped that we would have the redevelopment boards have an opportunity to come before us and to present, that sort of thing. So did you hear of a board that is complaining because they didn't meet? I don't, I don't know that that's still an issue, but...
I'm thinking that, I think the Beachside Board would like to have meetings, but I don't think it's just one board. I think in general, you know, we are the conduit, as someone mentioned, from the people as a group to the mayor, to the city manager. But I feel the same way about the redevelopment board in terms of, they also represent different interests in the community and they have really good ideas and we've accepted many of the ideas of other ad hoc boards that we've put together. So I think it's a resource that possibly we're not utilizing, but I would very much like to see them at least meet. And again, if they don't have a quorum, that's their decision, but the opportunity exists. And then again, I like what you're doing right now. They meet and then you come, you come and you tell us, "Hey, this is what they're saying." And then we try it. I would like to see what the different boards are capable of because we have some good people on those boards.
I'd like to interject. I believe that has been a concern of the Midtown Board because staff makes their agenda. But I think they feel as if, if they have some information, they would like to perhaps establish their own agenda, even if there's no city business, to discuss planning and what have you for the area and potential things that could possibly come, but that may or may not be in the board's guidelines, I don't know.
But they have the right to add to their agenda, so that's not really a...
Yeah. The key thing that I think is very important, we cannot just allow for boards to just meet when they're in the capacity of the official redevelopment board to just have discussions because they are assigned to you all to present things back to you. If a board chair wants to meet with their board and they can get a quorum, all they have to do is say to us they want to meet. The problem that will come about is if you keep calling meetings and it's supposed to be a seven-member board and three people show up, the amount, and I'm just being honest, the amount of staff time that goes into preparing for those meetings and making sure that they're a public meeting or on the video, we need to make sure that if there's not gonna be a quorum, it's just a side meeting, but we can't just have a side meeting where people are making decisions in a room. So if there is a group that wants to meet, I think, I can already say, I will be asking for the clerk to contact each board chair and ask the board chair, "What are your desires?" And if the board chair says they're having problems with making an agenda or calling a meeting or getting a quorum, we will deal with that because I don't want us to just have three people who want to meet that may not have anything to do, to come in and talk and have 10 staff members in here responding to three people and then have to come in for a board member, board meeting, when that could be a call meeting in the office. But we will find out, I'll deal with every board chair and if boards want to meet, we'll make it available to them.
You mean as it relates to their regularly scheduled meeting? Not an additional meeting?
Yes.
I don't think that they need to have
Yeah.
any additional meeting that is just to hang out.
No, I don't think that's the intent. I think that sometimes there, and there was a while, and I get that it's COVID, right? But there was a while when they were not meeting, you know, depending on what's going on, but I think they still should, that's me, and from what I'm reflecting back to you, there still should be something where they can meet on their regularly scheduled meeting. Just a thought.
It was their regular scheduled meeting. They didn't want additional meetings. They were just saying because staff didn't have anything for their agenda on the regular scheduled meeting, they would still like to have their regularly scheduled meeting to bring something maybe even to staff or, you know, they don't want an extra meeting.
And we agree to that, definitely.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. And that, and that concludes my three...
The two weeks. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Cantu?
Just asked if we... Is it on now? Okay. The two properties that bet up to the city park that you wanted to do, I'm saying park because you brought it up about the park. I wanted to see if, I know a while back, I believe, the mayor and some of the commissioners had said something, they would like to do something in memory of Officer Rayner. I did get the chief's blessing as well. The chief has gotten the family's blessing. I would like to see maybe naming that park, Rayner Park, up there on the west side. And I would also like to see if we could put a memorial out front of there of all of our Daytona Beach police officers that have passed away. And I have talked to some local businesses that are willing to pay for that as well. So just something to think about, I know we're miles away before that park gets started.
You're the commissioner in that zone and the funny thing is that I had talked with someone about the same thing, not necessarily that park, but a park, even a new park on the beach side. But I think this one is, doesn't matter what park, this is gonna be a nice park and it's in a good location, close to the police department. So, and it is your zone, so I think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And that's it.
What? So it'll be, well, we'll get to that point, but I like it. Rayner Park, Rayner Rock, my head is running now. Okay. Commissioner Henry?
Just one thing tonight, and that is that I'm very glad to see that the ADU passed tonight and thank you everyone for your support on that. Oh, it's something that we've been working on for over a year now. When I first brought it and Stacy came along and she jumped on board, and I just want to say that we don't look at this as an opportunity to solve the housing issue. That's not what this is for. It is an opportunity to separately address the issue and then we bring all of our ideas to the table and we do different things to address the issue. Even if only five, 10 families benefit from ADUs, it's a wonderful thing. And I can see 10 families, if 10 families benefit, that means 20 families benefit because the homeowner is gonna benefit as well because they will get income from it as well. So the goal with bringing this to the commission was not to solve affordable housing issue. It was just to bring one component of something that we can do immediately or right now to address the issue moving forward. So I do look forward in working further to continue to address affordable housing. It's been something that we've been talking about for about, since I first came to the commission. So this is a great step for us. And also keeping in mind that the state of Florida's Affordable Housing Committee, this was one of the things that they came up with for communities to do. So this wasn't just something that, although Sandy did come to me with the idea, it just wasn't a solo idea. This was one of the things that they put in the packet for us to look at as far as addressing the issue of affordable housing was ADUs. So it's, it's being widely used around the state and it's actually being widely used around the country. So it is not just something that we just threw together and just thought, "This is a great idea, let's just run with it." It's been proven and I'm very excited about that and...
Can I say something about that as well? Thank you. On those ADUs as well, I know there is a lot of misinformation out there. It was in my zone, Commissioner Reed's zone. And so if anyone really wants to know about ADUs, go back to the August 18th meeting and/or you can email me because I've had that video clipped where I had Deputy City Manager Jim Morris up there and I asked him the questions because the information I was getting, "We were gonna allow RVs in the driveways, we're gonna allow canisters in the driveways." And none of this is true. So please email me and I will email you the clip of the video if anyone needs that. Thank you.
That's all my comments for tonight.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's okay, waiting on you to address me. First, I'd just like to say, "Welcome, Ken." It was kind of funny when we had a vote and I heard a...
Yes.
Where did that come from? A little base in the vote there.
I am now the token white guy.
Yes, you are. Commissioner May, the tiny house was just adorable, but girl, I'd have to be a little 80-year-old lady with hardly nothing because I got too much right now to move into a little tiny house, but it was the cutest little thing. I would need the three-bedroom one. They had the one-bedroom on display. I would, you know, in addressing the flooding, it is an issue. We know it's an issue. I commend our city manager for these city walks. So he does his first city walk in Midtown on Thursday and on Friday, the heavens open up. It's one thing to tell somebody what flooding in Daytona Beach looks like, but it's another thing to see it. So I ask our citizens to be a little patient. He just got here, the man's only been here five months, even four or five months, but now he has no excuse because he's seen it. So he's gonna be working on it. You want to say something?
And I do want to thank you for coming out Saturday when we went and looked around the different areas that have been flooding. So I do want people to know that you, you were out.
Yes, sir, and so were you.
And so I do appreciate you coming out to look at it.
Yes, sir, we were riding through Wade, Wade through the water. Okay, okay. I would like to do something for my seniors. You know, they're finally coming back to Senior Oasis and I have an oasis at the Dickerson Center and at Midtown. And it's a little late, you know, I've been asking, "Were we going to fill Charles Bryant's position?" And you know, he used to do that senior prom? It's a little tardy for the senior prom, but could I do like a February Sweetheart Ball or Sweetheart, something like that, a system and putting something like that together? It'd be, you know, even a little bit further along in the, in hopefully the COVID relief and maybe able to do something that we can actually plan for the seniors to feel good about who they are and get dressed up and what have you.
Perfect idea for COVID money, AR money.
Mm-hmm.
I think, yeah.
And so I'm looking at maybe February, staff and I to plan something for February. And then also speaking of my Senior Oasis, it's the holiday and I'd like to know, can I use my Bike Week money to give each of my oasis like $100 towards their holiday thingy? I mean, I just transfer it to a city budget.
It's a city function, it's a city budget.
But you're not talking about giving it to the individual members?
No, sir, I'm talking about giving it to leisure services to support my oasis groups.
The events?
Yes.
Yes, that would be fun.
So for the record, I'd like to give $100 to my Senior Oasis at Midtown and $100 to my Senior Oasis at the Dickerson Center for them to have supportive leisure services for something for the holidays, since there is no prom, okay? Now on Garden Street...
Let me also join the commission.
Oh, good, so they get $200 each. You gonna give some money too? $100 as well to both? Oh, they gonna have a
So, I'm going, go ahead.
Also to the one at YSG, any of them.
Vince is counting. Y'all don't worry, Vince counting y'all money.
Well, it's the money for the people, so that's four of them for me and, okay.
Okay, that's okay. No, no, thank you. I apologize. Okay, I know we have... Andy, you still here?
Probably in the bathroom.
Okay. Andy came to our Neighborhood Watch and he shared a lot of information with us. And I know we have this guide on what streets we're going to do. But I'm telling you, you gotta see it for yourself. Garden Street between MMB and Oak Street is like a pool. There are so many holes on that street. I drove it, there's a shortcut to get to Garden on the other side of MMB. And I was like going around on people's lawns because of all the holes. And we don't need to just patch the holes, because apparently little tar stuff keeps coming out. That street needs to be paved. It's ridiculous. And the person who has a lot of holes in front of their home was at our Neighborhood Watch meeting and was expressing the need for something to be done. And it just so happened, I had driven it that day, so I really could concur with what the citizen was saying. So we're saying between Oak Street and MMB, the Garden Street. There's just that little block between MMB and Oak of Garden Street, okay? Thank you so much. And I'm getting ready to go paint Atlanta red. And may the best team win on Saturday, be it green and orange and maroon and gold. Because every day is a new day that the Lord has made. And anybody can win, and anybody can lose. We'll just see what the end will be. That concludes my comments.
I'd like to say how delighted I am to have a full complement of the city commission again with our token gentleman. And also, I was so terribly pleased to see the recognition we gave to our veteran employees. I think that was more well overdue and I hope we do that again next year. And I see that we're going to have a Christmas parade on December 11th. Wonderful. Looking forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, since we're on the top of our gentleman, again, congratulations. I look forward to working with you and expect great things from you. A lot of people during your campaign asked me to choose sides. They assumed that I would just naturally oppose you. But what they didn't realize was that, you know, in the two campaigns that we ran, you're always a gentleman and I always appreciated the way that you ran the campaigns. I always respected that. Look forward to working with you in this season of togetherness as we push Daytona forward. I didn't have a lot, but you all have talked about a lot. First of all, I know that we are building agendas for ARCA funds. And I'm going to come in probably at the beginning of the year with all of mine laid out. I hope by then that they'll all be laid out. And just, I'll have a sheet for you. And then I'm going through them with Drew as time goes on to say that we can or can't do this idea or that idea. But tonight, you all mentioned the Black Heritage Trail. And one of the things that I will be bringing forward as it relates to the Black Heritage Trail is the idea of a app to accommodate or accompany the Black Heritage Trail. So that when a person joins or comes to our city and they want to visit, they'll be able to just access this app that will highlight through interviews, through testimonials, through historic records that we made attached to it and just talk about the trail itself through this app. So that is one of the expenditures that I hope, you know, we will be able to approve. And that will be one of the things that I think will bring some life and help us to appreciate the history of the Black Heritage Trail. Earlier this evening, Judge Schuman's husband also asked that we place a plaque at Kelly Field of some sort commemorating the history of that field and the history of it to Jackie Robinson. I don't know that that field is not on the Black Heritage Trail, but it should be a part of it, is what I mean. It needs to, because it's important, that's largely where he played. And he's gonna help with the creation of a, some sort of a marker to denote that facility for what it was and what it was to him and his evolution. But I am excited about that aspect as it relates to us having, you know, an app that helps us to promote our city. And to me, this is what the ARCA funds are all about. What are ways that we can, as a community, stimulate ourselves? And I don't want us to look back in 20 or 30 years and say, how did it happen? Or what did we do with the money? I want us to have things that we can tangibly say were positive and that have made a difference in our community. And I think that's one.
Mr. Reed, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you move on, there was a third part to the development of the Midtown Center. It was the center itself, it was the aquatic center, and it was to bring Kelly Field back. I don't know what happened. The third part never took place. Something that we might want to pull up and address. And recently, I received an email from someone wanting to interview me and I sent the email to the manager as well in regards to Kelly Field and the historical fact that Jackie Robinson played there. So I'd like to find those plans and see what it entailed. I know the Midtown Center was put together with Echo dollars, which is why we do cultural things there to support that.
I kind of recall that and there were several things that happened with that. But a part of it was that, one, we don't have the, we don't have the energy or enthusiasm for baseball and we have several fields. But the second was the facility itself, for some reason, it was thought wasn't conducive to a field. Now, I have thought that what we should do at this facility is to add another component to the gymnasium as it relates to, so you will be able to double down on the gym. So you would then be able to have tournaments inside the gym. And you'd be able to put a net, because you could run then four sites. And you'd also be able to use Midtown. So we do have to think in terms of, but there is, staff will be able to maybe highlight what the reasons were. This was during Percy's tenure that we were unable to, or unwilling to do it. And part of it, I think, was, did have to do with financing, but some of it had to do with the locality. The other thing is, I actually like the facility as it relates to our ability to do things outside. Like when we were able to do the, they had something there last year where they set a stage up, cars were able to park during COVID, and it gives us parking space. So if you did those things, you take away those things. So you have to remember the space. And while I grew up like most of us going to Kelly Field and I value it, I just personally don't know if it's the best use of the space would be to add a baseball field there, given the relatively limited use that we get from the baseball fields that we have.
Something that truly can center. Plus, we have the retention mandate.
Yeah, and that was one of the issues. Yeah, that was what it was, part of it. Okay. Was there something else? I think you had another issue and then I'll jump back to my list.
There's something that I forgot. It actually has to do with the city manager. And I wanted to say, sir, that happy Founder's Day. Today is the Omega Sci-Fi Incorporated Founder's Day. So as a cue, thank you so much. I believe you're an Omega and to all the Omegas out there, thank you so much for your service to the community. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
All right now.
Commissioner Strickland has.
Commissioner?
I want to make one comment about something Commissioner Reed was talking about with the patches on the street. There are some streets in the mainland part of Zone 2 that have more patches than original pavement. I also would like to ask that whenever our public works or the gas company or whoever repair things under our streets, that we find somebody that can pave that little one spot back where it's smooth instead of making little mini speed breakers everywhere. How hard can that be? You know, I've seen some of our people where they put asphalt in there and then they take the truck they're driving and they back up, back and forward on it to pack it down. There's gotta be a better way to do that all over town. So I just thought I would throw that in there because she brought that up.
Okay. Well, I guess we can see that roads are important. And I will tell you all that at the last roundtable, meeting of, roundtable of elected officials, Big John mentioned that we needed to revisit the issue of a half cent or a penny sales tax for roads. And I don't know if anyone else was gonna co-sign, because I don't think they usually co-sign on things that he brings up. But I think I surprised him because I was the person to co-sign on it. Because regardless of how he feels about me, it's a great idea. The reality is that it's the right thing to do. We need to revisit that. And the roundtable will, in January, raise this issue as to how we can go back down that road again. Because the reality is, we have to remember that roads are extremely expensive. And we will never keep up as a county as we are now. And we need some designated source to help us. And another thing, and I said this the last time that we did this, to my colleagues on the mayor's roundtable at the time, I said that we needed to let the citizens drive it. And I still believe, I said that then, I say it now. We don't need Ed Kelly, or he's gone, or Chairman Brower, who I don't think supports it so far. But I think if he allows other people, even he might be able to join in and say, this is a good thing. But we need to get the elected people out of the way and let the people in the community show that it's something that we need. Just thought I would share that with you all, that I did bring that up. We will be talking about it. You need to be making your assessments as to how you will feel about that as it goes forward. ADUs, I think what we did tonight makes ADUs stronger. It doesn't make, it makes what we have stronger. It will make the whole process better. I realize that it was contentious and I realize that some people have certain feelings about it. But I think that if you really look at it, we made a good decision as it relates to that. And I don't think people are gonna rush out and build up a whole bunch. But I don't remember it being 150. I remember the number being more like 80,000 or 90,000 dollars to build an ADU. Yeah, I remember reading another number, so it's maybe in the document. But even if that is the number, it is what it is. But at any rate, I am happy with the decision that we made as it relates to that. Flooding. We have actually come a long way in Midtown over the last 15 years on flooding. And I know it doesn't feel like it to some people. But if you, I can name the streets that don't flood anymore. There are many, many of them. It's just, okay, so, but that doesn't mean that we still don't have a ways to go. But I do believe that help is on the way. And I think the community hopefully will be pleasantly surprised in the coming months or year about things that we may be able to do to make that issue one that will be abated even more than it has been. This Veterans Day, we hosted all 120 or 121 veterans who worked for the city of Daytona Beach. I happen to think that that is an outstanding number. And I am so proud that our city takes that little box that says that veterans preference seriously. And so here we have the plaque with all of their names of all of the city's veterans in Daytona Beach. We honored them last Thursday with a meal, the Peabody. A wonderful presentation, plaque. Senator Wright later that evening hosted a concert in their honor or to their delight, and he fed them again. So Daytona Beach appreciates its veterans.
We gave them the day off after.
And the manager gave them the day off after lunch. So he fed them and then sent them home.
Let's not forget the staff and Drew who put all that together as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Ken too had me up early that morning at 7:00 AM where we interviewed 12 veterans, three of whom are employees. Kim is one, and was another one. Who else was it? Vincent was the second one, and we had one more.
Shelley.
Shelley, three who came and joined us. And I tell you, it was wonderful. It was one of the best experiences I had as mayor, just talking to each one of them about their experiences in the military. Said a lot about them, said a lot about our country. We live in a great space. Mr. Manager?
Just real quick, congratulations to Ken. We had a great orientation with staff. And we gave him a bunch of big books. He says, please don't ask me to have that read by tomorrow. I said, well, two days from now, have it, have it read. I'm also just, no thanks that the mayor has approved for me to be on vacation next week. And I'm gonna actually put my phones down. So please contact Drew, Ms. Goodman. I'm not hanging out with Deputy City Manager Morris. I'll be hanging out with my wife. And today is not only my Founder's Day, it's my wife's birthday. And so she a little mad with y'all, but I told her, I told her that she'll get a great gift because I get a great paycheck, so.
Happy birthday, Ms. V H. Any other comments? Okay, yes, sir.
I have one thing to say. So it's time, I know, surprise. At the end of the meeting. But it's time to extend the agreement with First Step Shelter for the city to provide representation. So if you'd like to extend that for another three months, I have the amended contract with me. And we'll need to take some public comment after a motion.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion, we have a second. All right, do we have any comments? No comments. Thank you, Bob. Thank you for bringing that. Thank you all for keeping us represented. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those of you who are opposed, same sign. That motion also carries 7-0. One other issue? Rockville, got to mention this. I was not going to mention Rockville because none of you mentioned it. But Commissioner May mentioned it. I wasn't gonna mention it. But it must be said that, of course, we as a community do not embrace that type of activity that the young lady chose to engage in with the gentleman who, you know, did what they chose to do. What we must remember is that, yes, it reflects poorly upon our community. And it reflects poorly upon the venue. But what you also have to remember is that we have to respect the promoter. Because that young lady was immediately escorted off the property. They didn't wait. They escorted her off the property and she had two or three other gigs that weekend, all of which were canceled. So it cost her a lot of money. And she's also losing, from my understanding, other assignments in other communities. So when you act a fool in Daytona Beach... So when you act a fool in Daytona Beach, and we have to respect the promoter who acted in accordance with his or her convictions and did the right thing, they didn't waste time. Now, as it relates to our police department, I want to make sure that we understand that the community must understand that that's not our venue, it's not even in our city. And while we have a mutual aid agreement with this Speedway, and we could press charges, but we really didn't even have officers there supervising that situation. So what you have to remember is that that wasn't learned about from us until after the fact, and what we have to remember is that while it was only a misdemeanor, okay, I think it just would make some people feel better if they just pressed charges. But the reality is, on Saturday, I was at a funeral while they were at Rockville, and that was a funeral of a young man who was killed in our community. Okay? And so when people are outraged, and as we all have a right to be outraged and offended by what happened, I want to remind our community that the greater outrage needs to be of the pervasive levels of violence that exist in the community. So let our attention, and our police department's attention, be focused on what's most important, and let us be appreciative of the promoter for doing the right thing and taking care and handling their business, because they sent a message to other acts in the future, because otherwise the event was very much excellent. They made adjustments from the first night to the last three nights, or the succeeding nights. Remember the first night, I know we all got a lot of calls about the noise level. Well, that subsided the rest of the weekend, and it turned out to be a great event, with the exception of that young lady. So that concludes our remarks for tonight. We will now hear from the greatest citizens in all of America.
Okay. We're gonna start tonight with John Nicholson, and on deck is Patricia Hurd.
Bob, I didn't get up, but thank you for helping First Step Shelter. Secondly, oh, he's not here, but I asked Derek to include the hospital on MMB, onto the Black Heritage Trail, and a plaque be put on the building. Secondly, Ken brought up the asphalt that they're putting throughout the city. It's not just in the streets where I live, it's in the sidewalks, and it's a trip hazard, so it is everywhere. Third, 15 years ago, we created a health facility for those who could not afford it. They were at Bethune-Cookman College for those 15 years, they have to leave, so I'm asking you all to consider a property that we own. It's the old Driver's License Bureau, it's been vacant for 15 years. We allowed the veterans to use the Cornelia Young Library for a very modest fee. I'm asking you to think the same thing for the building that we have that we don't use. Also, the DDA for downtown advertises, there's no like facility or group on the beachside for Main Street. I'm asking that those resources that are used for downtown be also available to advertise for Main Street. Third, or lastly, the, one of the meetings, the woman from Habitat for Humanity mentioned that she has several properties that she cannot build on in Midtown. She said because of flooding. So I suggested to her that the city owns land out west by First Step Shelter, and we have an agreement with PBS, PNS Paving to dig up the dirt. If we could get the city to take that dirt, which is our dirt anyway, and move it into Midtown to raise those properties, so that the housings can be built, and also help other properties that are vacant to build up to a height that they can be built where they would not be flooding. It's our dirt, it doesn't matter whether it's out there doing nothing, or moved to Midtown where it would be beneficial. And I think that a way could be done with PNS Paving to give them additional dirt, so it doesn't cost us anything to have it moved down to Midtown. There are ways to get around things. And lastly, the CRAs, they don't get it squat. Things have gotten to the point where they're not even allowed to know the budget in the CRA. They do not know Midtown, nor does Main Street know what's coming into their CRAs. When a new building goes in, they're not told. If the city changes something, not told.
Our next speaker is Patricia Hurd, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
Patricia Hurd, 822 Vernon Street, Daytona Beach. First of all, I would like to speak of the city walk. I am concerned, we enjoyed ourselves, and many things were pointed out to the city manager. But I want to also say about the city major corridors, which I know is Orange Avenue is one, and Bellevue is another one. My question is, when are we going to take a walk from Dickerson Center south to Shady Place? That is important. And going back to talking about Midtown, 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 let's talk about Midway and Newtown, okay? I'm not going there tonight, but that is important, Midway and Newtown. We came up with the Midtown several years ago to combine both of them, but I would like to know, when are we gonna take a walk to Shady Place? I have already spoken to someone about all these 18-wheelers in the neighborhood parked on South Street and everywhere else. I want you all to be aware that this is taken away from the property of these people around. If they're gonna drive 18-wheelers, they have places for them to park, and not in our neighborhoods. Talking about flooding, well, I can take you back to the 50s and 58s, when we were in South Street Project, and the Robinsons, and we paid them five and 10 cents to go, move out from South Street Project up there to Campbell Street to catch the bus or something. But there's still flooding out there. And Kelly Field, yes, that is a very important part. We did May Day and everything else with Yvonne Scarlett Golden. And right now, it has a pond out there, but it would be nice if something could be done. Also, someone is going to speak later about all of these signs on these poles down MLK or MMBB. So we need to do something about that. People coming to town, making our neighborhood trashy, and that is not to be. And for those of you who are here, go Wildcats.
And Ms. Hurd, it was nice to see you at the Neighborhood Watch Meeting.
Oh, that was not a Neighborhood Watch Meeting, I go to be informed of what's going on, but it wasn't a Neighborhood Watch. The chairman is not even in our neighborhood, okay?
But he took on the charge, because you didn't.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Denise Stone.
Good evening once again, Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, I'm disappointed once again we haven't heard an update on the Bridgeport Heights land. I was kinda hoping we'd hear something by now about what the plan of action is going to be, turning this rightfully to the citizens of Daytona Beach. I hope to hear from you real soon, because we're not gonna keep kicking the can down the road. If we have to take legal action, then maybe that's what we need to do. But this is land that belonged to the city, was wrongfully given. The mayor's been there, he recognizes the problem. Time for action. The other thing I wanted to talk about on the Esplanade Project, and unfortunately, well, fortunately and unfortunately, a lot of the planning was done ahead of time, and to some of the recent events, and Malcolm had some excellent suggestions, which I concur with, in making that an even better place. For those of you who are not aware of, the original 401 Memorial was located on Beach Street, in the area that has been designated as the Rose Garden, part of the Esplanade Project. And it was removed in 19, it was there from 1932 to 1975. It was one of the most beautiful pieces in Daytona, it was on most of the postcards that you bought from 1932 up to about 1970. It was then more or less dumped along the side of the road on Orange Avenue, and for those of you who haven't seen it, it's right there before you get to the zip line. It's falling apart, got mold, it's got stalactites from where the memorial building has deteriorating from the water, that has not been kept up at all. The structure was radically altered, and for those of you who haven't seen it, unfortunately, I don't have access to the video monitors up here, but if you look up in the history of Daytona Beach, you will see how beautiful it once was. It was in a garden, reflecting pool in front, had beautiful flowers in it, it would be perfect. Add that with, along with the Freedom documents that we're talking about, and it's this grave reminder that this freedom is not free. There are people that fought, died for the freedom, and those papers are gonna be a wonderful addition to Daytona, it would be nice to be able to have the Veterans Memorial added to it. And also, I've spoken on this several times in the past, crosswalk safety, I still would like to see the city of Daytona Beach come up with a standard for crosswalks, which included not only the Hawk-type systems, but the in roadway light system. They work, they work well, that would save lives. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Denise Stone, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson. She's gone. Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Malcolm Williams.
Marjorie Johnson, Daytona Beach. I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about the flooding in Midtown. I drove my car down there near the Campbell Street School, and the people was dishing water up in those houses that lived there, that's an 800 block. My street is not as bad, because I'm at the beginning of the street, right behind the craft stop. You don't have as much flooding as they do down across from the project and near the school, the deplorable conditions, and something needs to be done about it. It's been going on like this for years. So I'm gonna speak, when it's time to speak, and you should listen, when you hear the constituents complaining about these things, because we're paying you to take care of them. The other concern that I have is that I often get calls from several of the residents who live over there, Live Oak and Wally Street, and they are complaining about those streets that's all cracked up, this is Zone Six, and they want them fixed. I know you have a list of the streets, I haven't seen them, the ones that you're gonna repair, but we need to get streets paved. Live Oak is in deplorable condition, has fallen reason, a zone, and it's all lumpy and cracked up, it's been that way for years, and it's time to fix it. Same thing with Wally Street, we have senior citizens living there, a lot of trash out front, and that needs to be fixed. Now, they have the Veterans Memorial statue sitting over there, in that park over there, and they need to get over there and fix that statue, because I went over there and looked at it, and it's in bad shape. I don't know why they took it there, but it's a statue that represents history, and that needs to be fixed. Also, we have a lot of racing going on on my street, on our key street, they're speeding up and down that street constantly, and I rarely see police officers there. And I spoke when I went to one of the meetings, that Steve Villa, who's doing a good job having those meetings, so we can address problems to people there, bringing them there from the city, and I thank him for doing that, because that's something that we need. And I rarely see any police officers patrolling our streets, and they open up that old highway patrol station, but there's nobody there, it's closed. So they was excited about it when they first opened it, they need to open it up, even if they have to get volunteers in there, because we have problems over here. The substation need to be open. I went over there, I didn't see not one police car over there. We need y'all to address these issues. I will continue to speak when it's time, need to look and correct it.
Our next speaker is Malcolm Williams, and on deck is Chris Bullinger.
Good evening everyone, Malcolm Williams, 1006 Libby Avenue. I want to start by saying, Commissioner Reed, that with the Oasis, thank you for the idea, you're kinda making me work a little faster now, because we were getting ready to present a plan for all the Oasis to join us at the YSG Center for a night of jazz and a little red and white ball in February. So there's probably something that we can link up with and talk about and discuss, that was just one of our ideas that we had in the area. I had a Saks meeting this afternoon again, and I took back some of the notes that we had from the last meeting to this meeting, and also the District Saks meeting at Mayland last week, and the excitement is in the air. I do thank you, Mr. Mayor, he was kinda reluctant, but Mr. Bob Davis did come through for me, and he made a smile today, I'll just say that. So he told us whatever we need, he got our back, so the teachers are really excited. We want to welcome Ken to the commission, and also, he's in the other room, congratulate Chief Young on a good first year, his time has been moving very, very fast, and some of you all received an email from me about our Neighborhood Watch Meeting, we're deeming our next meeting in October, to be just a month of celebrating, December, what did I say, October? Just to end our year off in our celebration for all of the success that we have had, we have been doing a lot of great things, and we don't want to go get those things to be overlooked. And I personally want to say thank you to everybody, even Miss Ann Ruby, and everybody that comes out that corrects me in the middle of a meeting, when I need to be, and they help us out, and it really is, I would say this, I've been around a lot of city leaders and a lot of city, this is by far the best year I've ever had, working with a city, and I come from the city of Miramar, where I was trained in this area to do it, and I will say, I always thought Miramar set the standard, but I am so glad to be living here in Daytona Beach and working in my passion, and in my calling with all of you. You guys have literally helped change me, and making me daily into a better person. So I look forward to working with you guys, working with some of the advanced things that we have coming up, and thank you guys in advance.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Bullinger, and on deck is Ann Ruby.
Hi, I'm Chris Bullinger, and 137 Pointon Woods Drive, up in Indigo. And so I'm here just to point out that we're having the landowner of the golf course requesting zoning changes, and as a homeowner, we all bought homes there because of the open space, the view, you know, definitely we like the sound of a club hitting a ball, and we miss that, but we do not want commercial, we do not want industrial, we do not want, you know, all the things that he's proposing are high density, very high density, and it's gonna erode our property, our sense of right, our views, definitely. to erode our, our property, our sense of right, our views, definitely. I do not want to look at somebody's dumpster behind their commercial building. And we as a whole, there might be like two houses in the whole subdivision that say, yeah, go for it, put all those houses in, but everybody else is, we're highly against it. And so please, take that to heart when you're looking at their proposals, and the staff and the boards and the planning commissions are looking at their plans. Please remember that we have our rights too. Really want to preserve our, our way of life.
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Okay. We did have a community meeting regarding the Indigo Golf Course, actually, yesterday evening, and we probably had about 250 residents show up. And right now, as I told, I actually talked to you, as of right now, there is nothing that's went through to the city, and so this was them trying to get ideas. We did surveys, and so I do have all the surveys from you, and they have been turned over to our city clerk. And so they will be shared if anything does come through or anything. And I believe you had something to say too. So I did read every single one of them, and I am listening.
Awesome. That's good. That's what we can ask for. Thanks.
I, I know that Commissioner Ken too has been very much in tune with what's going on, and I have as well. I'm going to arrange a meeting just for myself and the residents based on what you heard the other night, so that you can share your sentiments with me, so that I can then begin to shape what I hope will be a narrative that says that, same thing we said a few weeks ago, we value the people who have invested in that community, and we value their expectation that it maintain a close semblance to its original purpose, as long as that's what the people want. So I want to hear from the folks, and once I hear that, I'm going to begin to start to inject myself into the conversation. And what I will say is publicly, is that the person who has made the investment in the property thus far has not shown me that they are invested in our community. And what we have to remember as a city is that we're looking for people who are, you know, we're past the days where we have to, you know, I remember ten years ago when nobody would show up in Daytona Beach. I mean it literally. Nobody was knocking on our door, they didn't want to build anything anywhere. Well, we're not a stepchild anymore, and we, we're not going to be treated like stepchildren by any speculator. So if you are speculating on simply profiting, the message is going, I'm hoping that we will continue to send the message that this is not the place for your speculation. And so I, but before I write and just go all in, I have much more to say and much stronger sentiments, but I want to hear from the residents so that I can express what you say to me. As the mayor, I want to make sure that I, I understand and that I feel what you feel, and that I can not only share from this dies, but I think we need to be sending a message across our community. Because this I see as an opportunity, I, I see it as a test case as it relates to who we are and how we're going to respond to certain situations. But you are being heard, and you will be heard even more.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate your attitude. Thank you.
Okay.
One other thing. No, you're fine. Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Ann Ruby. When I got there, I went, I was by myself with these surveys, and I had over 250 people, and I was so happy to see her there. Oh, my gosh, she's, yes, she was a lifesaver, so thank you.
And I, of course, showed up when it was over. And so, but I'm going to hear from the residents. Okay.
And our next speaker is Ann Ruby, and on deck is Jenny Nazak.
Hi, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. The reason I showed up is because I'm a member of Citizens for Responsible Development, and part of our mandate is to go to all of those meetings. So even though I don't live there, I go to, we go to them. So, okay, so, tonight, I think we need to add two things to the Black History Trail. One, of course, is the hospital. I was really grateful to learn about that. Thank you. Surely should be on there. But also, the boundaries of the three neighborhoods that make up Midtown, the Way Cross, Newtown, and Midway, because each one of those is a, not, they're not necessarily a stop on the trail, but they're part of the Black Heritage history. So we should add information about those and put the boundaries on the map.
And I also think signage.
Oh, definitely.
We're in this, this age of signage, and I think we need to, we need to illustrate that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And if we could do plaques, that would be great, because not everybody's going to have an app. And the write-ups that are in the booklet are wonderful. They're, they're in-depth, and we need something like that on the hospital and the three separate subset neighborhoods. So thank you. On the ADU, I think if it's possible, and I don't know how this legally plays out, could we do something about landlord education? So I'm a homeowner, I come in, I've never been a landlord before, this is going to be the one time I'm a landlord. I should be able to know what my liabilities are, what the risks are, what my obligations are. And I think if we could add that as part of the application process to just give people information, it might actually discourage people, but if it discourages them because they're educated, that's a better thing than having them jump into it and be surprised later. Okay. And that's all, except I wish you, Mr. Fiescher, a very happy vacation, and I will not email you once. Thank you.
Wow. I said a wow.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak, and on deck is Stephen Miller.
Phew, it's cold. I'm cold. When the air comes on, I think I get cold.
Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey Avenue. I'm back with my flaming thermometer. I don't have the burnt toast today because I needed the bread to make sandwiches, and but, but urban heat is, is still with us, yes, climate change and urban heat. And the flooding that came, you know, upon us was actually a, a part of this, the, the heat effects do both. They make rains get rainier and droughts get droughtier. And some of us in this room are gardeners, and we might notice how dry it was this past spring, especially if you carry water by hand to your garden, like I do, you, you might have noticed that it was really dry. And so we get these really extreme rains and these really extreme dries. So I sent you all an email, some of you might have seen it, and some of you may not have because I mailed it late in the day, but it'll be waiting for you in your inbox. On, on one of my pet subjects, which is puffy landscaping, puffy landscaping, making, making, well, trees are the ultimate puffy landscaping, but tall grasses, shrubs, different kinds of ground covers, basically make the ground more like a sponge, and it becomes a drought buffer and it becomes a floodwater buffer. It just becomes more absorbent like a sponge. And, you know, when you see like, like a bowl and the floodwaters are all at the bottom, of course, you want to put your attention down to where, where the flooding, it's like there is all this water down there. But in the reality, flooding starts at every point along that bowl and along that hill, and the more absorbent we can make the ground. I mean, obviously, this is an urban area, so we have asphalt, and we have roofs, and you know, other things that can't catch every single inch of water right where it falls. But the most that we can do to catch water where it falls, the, the better off we'll be. So, thank you all very much. Happy vacation, and I didn't know that when I sent you the email. Everybody, have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephen Miller.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, I'm excited. I'm even more excited than to help. Oh, by the way, my name is Steve Miller, 383 Walnut Street. Thank you very much. Zone Three. I want to say congratulations to my brother Ken. We have the same month and year of birth. So we, we brothers from another mother. So congratulations. I love seeing Anglo-Saxon mail on our commission. You guys have been missing for a while. Thank you. And it was my pleasure to be able to help get a white man on the board. And, and, and one of the things that I bargained with him was that if I help you, I need you to help us get a pool on the, on the beach side. I know we got an ocean out there, and we got a lot of people with pools, but it's a lot of people live on the beach side that can't afford pools. So, you know, yeah, we need a pool over there. You know, they like to be in the sun. So, and, and some water too, so get a tan. As relates to Midtown meeting, will be on December the 14th of 2020, and we're trying to get our public defender, Madam President of NWA CP, we're trying to get Metz to come and talk to us. He represents a lot of folks from our neighborhood. As relates to the senior prom, man, y'all made me excited tonight, even though it's, we're not having the senior prom this year, and I appreciate the fact that y'all talking about something for Valentine, because that's exactly what we was talking about the night I had written here. So Malcolm, thank you guys, and we want to support you. And, and as relates to the senior prom, the Christmas, we're having a Christmas party and for the Neighborhood Watch. It's all about, not Neighborhood Watch, but our seniors programs, they all going to come together for a Christmas party on December 21. And the neighborhood, and all of the senior programs will be working together. And I really thank you guys for putting up money to help with that program, and I was kind of hoping it was $200 from each of you guys, but I can understand that. I also want to say, I wanted to say happy birthday to my honorary, I'm, I'm his honorary Q brother, Derek Fiescher, but we're really disappointed that you didn't make it to the press talk Tuesday. So we're going to give you an excuse for this one, but not next year. And, and then I also have a friend by the name of Cassandra Stroud, her birthday is Omega Birthday as well then. Thank you for that. I also want to say happy birthday to my dear friend, Keisha, who went to school with my son, and, and congratulations on your vacation. Thank you for walking. I'm not going to call you on your vacation. I'm going to call Keisha. Thank you.
Is that our final speech?
Happy gobble-gobble.
Nothing else. May the blessings of Thanksgiving be upon our city. Good night.